To order the December tenth, Common Council Meeting. Clerk, can you please take the role?
Crowsey.
Here.
Echel.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Furman.
Here.
Mugrower.
Here.
Palmeri.
Here.
Present seven.
And Councilmember Crowsey will lead us in the invocation, followed by the Alps Charter School Code Orange Lego League Team Pledge of Allegiance.
We are mindful of the blessings of liberty that we have in this nation. May our decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have an introduction of city staff. Mr. Lyons.
Thank you. Can introduce Brian tonight. Brian was a graduate of UW Oshkosh in 2013 with a degree in urban planning. He started with the city in both planning and inspections, doing a mixture of planning and code enforcement. Over the last three years, Brian has been in our assistant planner position, focusing primarily on code enforcement, land use planning, and Board of Appeals issues. Over the last six months or so, Brian has undertaken increasingly complex land use and planning commission items. Once Darren moved on, I was promoted, Brian started to kind of fill in the gap for us in some of the more complex zoning stuff. We've made the decision to promote Brian to our planner position so we can undertake increasingly more difficult work. We look forward to Brian to continue to grow in his new role with the city.
Welcome.
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 Next, we have a proclamation. Mr. Bernie Faust would join me. The Lego team, we're leading us in the pledge. Thank you for your patience. Whereas Oshkosh resident Bernie Faust has been the key organizer of the Tin Can Sailors reunion, an event of the National Association of Destroyer Veterans in the United States; and whereas the National Association of Destroyer Veterans currently serves approximately 20,000 members; and whereas, under Mr. Faust's leadership, the Tin Can Sailors, a nonprofit group, has had their local annual reunion in Oshkosh for the past 24 years; and whereas the Tin Can Sailors reunion has reunited fellow Navy members to celebrate their past service and give them opportunity to reconnect; and whereas the event has generated over $500,000 in economic activity for the Oshkosh area; and whereas Bernie Faust has been instrumental in the continued success of this event. Now therefore, I Lori Palmeri, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, December tenth, 2019 Bernie Faust Day in the City of Oshkosh, and urge the citizens of the City of Oshkosh and surrounding area to recognize the merits of Mr. Faust and his tireless efforts to support and reunite the Tin Can Sailors, drawing attention to the men and women who have served our country, allowing us to enjoy our freedom as American citizens.
Thank you. I've told this story a couple times. I went to my first Tin Can Sailor event in Madison in 1995. And the president lived in Madison, our headquarters is in Massachusetts, but he lived in Madison. And I don't know what possessed him, but he came to me that night and he said, Bernie, how'd you like to take this to Oshkosh and try it for one year? Madam Mayor, I had so much fun with it, it lasted 20 years. And then I had to give it up because of my health problems.
We certainly appreciate it. And on all of those Tin Can Sailors and Destroyer Veterans do as well.
I got one more story I wanted.
Yes.
Only one, Bernie? Come on.
Over the years, people came from five or six states. In fact, one person even flew in from Alaska, not for me, but for somebody who was attending our event. And he wanted to get that man's autograph. I was elated at that. Well, this first guy came from upper Minnesota, and the other guy came from down in Illinois someplace. The ironics of that is, these two people served on the same ship, but they hadn't seen each other for 50 years. Can you imagine the emotions? I'm having some right now. Thank you so much. It's my honor and privilege to represent Tin Can Sailors and to receive this hot proclamation. I will never forget it. Thank you.
I love those stories. Next, we have two presentations. The first one is the Alps Charter School Code Orange Lego League Team.
Hello, we are Code Orange Team 16152 from Oshkosh, Wisconsin. The problem we identified this year is that our landfills are filling up with trash. Thirty to forty percent of the stuff that gets dumped into our landfills is biodegradable material that decomposes and produces methane, a greenhouse gas that pollutes our atmosphere. The leftover solid waste pollutes of the land and water.
Our innovative solution was to add another biodigestible can to our pre-existing curbside pickup. This would be picked up with the same types of trucks that our other garbage recycling bins get mixed up with, but it will be taken to our local biodigester, EWO.
The biodigester charges less than a landfill per ton. The biodigester charges around $20 per ton, while the landfill charges around $22 per ton.
The biodigester takes any biodegradable material, like used paper towels, pizza boxes, yard listing food. It uses bacteria to decompose the waste faster than the normal landfill. The digester collects the methane gas, which is just bio gas to use as fuel, which can currently park about 200 delivery houses each year. Leftover solids are made into compost and shipped to a local landscaping company to be sold to farmers and gardeners.
The biodigester can take 200 tons a week, or over 10,000 a year. That's a lot of stuff that would be taking up space in our landfills. Homeowners will have a biodegradable waste can, just like the current garbage and recycling plants. The city would rotate weeks of recycling. For example, week eight would be curbside trash and recycling pickup, and week B would be trash and biodigester waste pickup. But won't that stink? We realized that the trash in this can might stink. So our solution is to include a carbon sheet, which will absorb odors, which will also not attract animals.
We designed CAD brackets that would be in the can's disposal sheet. It's like, we first had to research the carbon filter that would work for this. And then we had to measure the entire length of the can to see if it fit. Then I had to figure out how we were gonna mount it to the can. So we decided that we needed to make like a bracket of some sort. So we had one of our high schoolers help us from the robotics program and help us figure out how to use arm changes. We were able to CAD and 3D print those brackets to help mount it to our trash disposal filter.
The carbon sheet will be retrofitted to the current Kansas City users, and it'll be easy to replace when necessary. The way you slide out is by sliding it in and out to the side. The carbon sheet has pretty good longevity, lasting up to three months at a time. That means you only need four carbon sheets for a whole year. The carbon sheet is also pretty cheap, only costing $18 for a four-pack. We also made holes in the brackets so we could rivet the brackets to the lip. The brackets are extremely cheap, only costing $0.20 each to make. That means it only costs $0.10 to retrofit the whole can. The carbon sheet has a bunch of tiny holes in it, which absorb the odor coming from the trash, and so the odor can't get back out, so that the sheet doesn't leak. That method is called absorption. All our experts agreed that it would be best to start this program by starting a pilot program. We would start this pilot program with 500 households and slowly work our way up. That way, the process would be very hard. This would also be a very good way for the city to see if this would be a good idea or not. We would also hand out a fact sheet and a pamphlet along with the trash cans. The pamphlet will include all of the things that you can and can't biodigest. It will also include where to put the can and what the pickup schedule would be depending on their part of town. This information would also be placed onto the Sanitation and Parkings website.
Another current thing about this pickup is the collection can. This is cost homeowners a one-time fee of $50, and an annual fee of about $18 to buy the four pack of filters. The homeowners would be able to find these sheets online so they could replace them as needed and restock on them.
We met with Margie Davy, a part of the Oshkosh Sustainability Board, and Stephen Wiley, Assistant Planner of the City of Oshkosh. We discussed how we could persuade people in our community to use our biodigester pickup plan.
We met with Tim Winchester from the Sanitation Department. We talked with him about the cost of a biodigester collection to the curbside pickup box for the city. He thinks it'll cost about $1.2 million for the city to purchase another garbage truck, buy collection cans, and hire a full-time employee.
We also emailed Misty McPhee from the Environmental Studies Program, and she offered to help us contact more experts. And we will be meeting with her later this month. We also met with Brian Legault, who is a biodigestor worker. He showed us how some of the features of the biodigestor and told us how we could potentially install a biodigest pump to fuel the city's collection tanks. This would be super convenient and save the city a lot of money because the biodigest is right across the street from the city garage. Our business plan, our business plan is funding the cost of the can and what the project is to both homeowners and the city of Oshkosh. The biggest upfront cost is buying a collection tank. That price would be split up between all homeowners. The weekly savings in dumping fee, about $1,700, will easily cover the cost of a new employee, and savings in fuels expenses and the grant could cover the cost of the garbage truck. Now, let's make this idea a reality.
Our next step should be to send out a survey to homeowners so they can find out what's some of their attractions biodigestable. We would then ask if anyone wants to participate in our pilot program. And then we would have to talk to the City of Oshkosh and EWO to make this work and find some financial details, like installing a fuel pump tank for the trucks, and going to agree, like agreements that benefit everyone. Any questions?
Wow. That's pretty amazing. I just have a question. So why would we do this and not just ask people to drop their biodigestible contents at the biodigester or a central location like the farmer's market?
We would do this because it's a lot more convenient for the people because we've always had a recycling center, but before we did recycling pickup, it wasn't used as much as it should have been. So it's a lot more convenient. And after that, the recycling would point out, obviously, because people put it in their recycling.
And along with that, also there are some people who might not have time to go to that, like if they have a larger busy schedule, or who have kids that are many extracurriculars that can take up time, like during the weekend or during the week, which could cause them not being able to visit the open times of the biodigestor to drop it off.
I think that's a, I love your answer to that question because you're absolutely right. Mr. Robby, you weren't here, I don't think, but what is it? Probably good 25 years ago is when we started doing curbside recycling pickup. And before that, you're right, there wasn't as much participation in that process. And now, it absolutely is a requirement, and it's great for the environment. It's great for this community. I think you, I think you guys picked a fantastic topic, and you guys presented very well, by the way.
Very nice.
Mr. Roloff, could that be our wild question for our citizen survey to ask about?
Our wild card question. Wild.
Wild card question, whatever.
They may be, with all due respect to the council, they're the seven most sane people in the room right now.
But I'm thinking that we always throw one of those kind out there.
That's a great idea. I like that. We could put that in the survey and see what kind of...
Response we get.
Happy to work with them about what the questions might be, the importance of surveying the communities.
Very important.
Getting the question right is really important.
And just real quick, did you say that you had estimated how much would be diverted from the landfill by doing curbside pickup?
Yeah, about thirty to forty percent. Stuff that goes to landfills is actually biodigestible, and it produces methane. And that amount in tons would be around 101 to 90 because we've crunched some numbers and we divided 253 by whatever we need to. And then we got 90 to 100.
Very nice, very nice. Thank you so much.
Great job, guys. Thank you, guys.
So next, we have a presentation by Tammy McLaughlin for World Relief, requesting city support to receive refugees as required by the U.S. Department of State.
Can I stand here? Is this good? Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers. I really appreciate this opportunity. My name is Tammy McLaughlin. I am the Director of World Relief Fox Valley. I'm going to read from my notes as I appreciate, as I don't want to miss any details that I feel are really relevant to this topic. I'm going to start with a very high-level perspective of refugee resettlement and then continue at a local level. I'll talk for less than 10 minutes, I promised the mayor, and then hope to conclude by answering any questions that you might have. So refugees are people who've had to flee their countries for fear of persecution, war, or violence. There are over 25 million refugees in the world. Half of them represent people under 18 years of age. Our Congress, back in 1980, established the 1980 Refugee Act, which was created to provide a permanent and systematic procedure for the admission of refugees to the United States. The United States Refugee Admissions Program is a consortium of federal agencies and nonprofit agencies working together both overseas and domestically to identify and then admit qualified refugees for resettlement into the United States. A qualified refugee is one who has been through a vetting process that includes, but is not limited to, biometric and biographic checks, inter-agency intelligence sharing, background investigations by the FBI, Department of Defense, State Department, and National Counterterrorism Center, and also in-person interviews by Homeland Security officers. This process is completed overseas and takes 18 months, sometimes up to three years, to complete. A refugee is admitted to the United States at the sole discretion of our government. Each fiscal year, the President of the United States determines the number of refugees our country will resettle. And since 1980, the United States has set an average annual refugee admissions goal of 95,000 per year, and we've resettled an average of 80,000 refugees per year. This year, the admissions number has been set at 18,000. There are nine nonprofit agencies who contract with the government to provide refugee resettlement services, World Relief being one of them. When the President determines the number of admissions each year, that number is distributed amongst those nine agencies, which represent about 300 affiliate offices across the United States. Each of the affiliate offices work with our national agencies, so World Relief Fox Valley would work with World Relief, our national agency. We also work with the Wisconsin State Refugee Coordinator and her team, and we also speak with our local partners, all to determine the capacity of our agency and the community where we reside. Each of the national agencies then submit a proposal to the government that includes the number of refugees they are prepared to receive, along with the other data specific to each of the affiliate offices and communities. This year, for the first time, the administration is also requiring consent from state and local officials in order for refugee resettlement to continue in their state and localities. So how does this apply to World Relief Fox Valley and our local community? World Relief Fox Valley opened in Oshkosh in 2012, and we later expanded by opening a small satellite office in Appleton. Our main office remained in Oshkosh for five years, but in early 2018, we transitioned our main office to Appleton and now operate a smaller office here, so we flip-flopped. We believe that both Oshkosh and Appleton are welcoming communities, are good communities to welcome refugees, but we wanted to balance the number of refugees in each community. Since 2012, we've resettled 982 refugees. 611 have been placed in Oshkosh and 355 in Appleton, and a few to other remote locations. So we're at about a 60-40 split, about 60% in Oshkosh, 40% in Appleton. Before we moved our main office to Appleton, we were around 70-30. This past fiscal year, which was year 2019, and we just completed the end of September, we resettled a total of 165 refugees, 125 were placed in Appleton, 35 in Oshkosh. So we are making significant progress with creating better balance between the two communities. The Refugee Admissions Program was designed as a public-private partnership, and that is truly how we operate in the Fox Valley. We convene monthly with our partners in both Oshkosh and Appleton to discuss matters involving refugees that are unique to each community. In Oshkosh, our partners include the Oshkosh Area School District, Fox Valley Technical College, Winnebago Literacy Council, Winnebago County Health Department, Winnebago County DHS Forward Services Corporation, that's just to name a few. We also place a great emphasis on recruiting volunteer and donation support from local, volunteer and donation support from local churches. We've received great support this year from Community Church on Riff Road, First Congo on El Goma, First United Methodist on Lindwood Avenue, St. Jude's on Oregon Street, and Living Stone on Church Street, again, just to name a few. Some think that refugees are a drain to our community, our economy. And while they do utilize benefits upfront, various studies have found that in the long term, refugees contribute significantly more in tax revenues than they cost taxpayers in form of refugee assistance or public benefits. They also play an increasing role in our local economy. Our local unemployment rate is 2.6%, and labor shortages pose a significant threat to ongoing economic growth. Most of our refugees are placed in light manufacturing, packaging and printing services, food service, recycling. Often, they're jobs that Native Americans don't want. Our employment specialist received eight calls from employers in one month earlier this year. They were all looking for refugee workers. We had worked with five of those employers. Three we had not worked with previously, but they had heard about World Relief and our refugee work corps. Two were in Oshkosh, UPS and Bemis. In September, Lakeside Packaging called us. They hoped that we could help them fill a dozen positions they needed to fill to fill a contract. So when you evaluate, discuss refugee resettlement in our community, I hope you will keep these and the following points in mind. Refugee resettlement is a strong bipartisan tradition that reflects American values. It represents a humanitarian response, but it is also a national security and foreign policy position. It falls under the Department of State. The number of refugees received per fiscal year in the Fox Valley is discussed with our community stakeholders. It is a small number compared to our population base. Oshkosh is a community of about 66,000. We've resettled 611 refugees since we opened in 2011. That averages about 76 per year, or .009% of the population base. Refugees do utilize benefits upfront, but the long-term benefit is favorable. Although I don't have local statistics, a large study was done by the Department of Health and Human Services, the federal government. Over a 10-year period, they documented the net fiscal impact of refugees at $63 billion. According to the study, from 2005 to 14, refugees paid an estimated $269 billion in federal, state, and local taxes. That includes us. Here in the Fox Valley, our refugee population is just starting to mature. We're young, we're a young office. So we are on the verge of seeing refugees beginning to thrive. Businesses opening, second-tiered employment, homeownership, graduates of college, citizenship. As we continue to mature, we will see these milestones multiplied. I hope you better understand the history, structure, and impact of refugee resettlement. This truly is not only a Fox Valley issue, but it is of utmost priority and importance to those we have welcomed here, who now call this community their home. I hope you will consent to receiving refugees in Oshkosh. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions.
Call this one, Mayor Miller?
Thanks, Mayor. This is very interesting to me. I wish I would have prepared a little bit better. It was a hectic day, but thank you for doing what you do. My only question, really, is the disparity between Appleton and Oshkosh. We have a 19% poverty rate. Their poverty rate is much lower. They're a much wealthier city. Why aren't they at least taking half, half of these people helping out with us? I mean, is there any rhyme or reason to that statistic?
Well, that's really part of our doing. And I tried to explain that, that we opened our main office here and started here in Oshkosh. And when we saw that disparity, you know, we started expanding into Appleton a year later. We decided we were going to move to Appleton. So we're getting closer. We're at a 60-40. So we're getting closer. So we understand that, you know, it's a better to balance between the two communities. So it wasn't, there wasn't anything beyond, okay, our main office opened here, and that was before my time. I'm not exactly sure what the philosophy was with Oshkosh. But we do believe that both communities are receptive. Both communities are supportive. We have as many people at the Appleton partner meetings as we do at the Oshkosh meetings. Both, you know, the school districts, the technical colleges, they're both very similar in how they welcome and receive. So we're, you know, we're trying to do that. And I don't know if that answers your question, but there wasn't a, there wasn't a specific formula or purpose behind that. Does that make sense?
You did a great job answering that. Thank you. One little follow-up question. So do, why Appleton, Oshkosh? How come we're not in other communities in the state too?
Sure, that's a great question. There's three communities who are resettling refugees. Milwaukee is by far the greatest community. We are, we're less, about 10%, maybe, depends on the year, but about 10% of Milwaukee. And then Madison is a little below us. And they won't be adding any additional offices now because the ceiling has dropped so low. But if that would change and we go back to higher ceilings, then I would assume that they would consider other, other communities to resettle.
So Madison, Madison takes fewer refugees than Appleton and Oshkosh does?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah.
Do you know the number? And if you don't, don't worry, I'm not trying to...
I have it written down.
No, no. That's not that important.
Yeah, it's pretty close. And actually, I'm surprised by that because Madison is a very difficult resettlement area. The housing there is incredibly expensive, so it's really hard for them to find good housing. And they're a new office. A lot of affiliates are faith-based and Jewish. Social services is who's there resettling, and they just opened two years ago. So sometimes the newness is also for the lower numbers, but yeah. And then Green Bay had a big Somali population that they resettled several years ago, but then Catholic Charities is no longer doing that. So some of that is jockeying around, so yeah. Communities are different.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Mayor?
Tammy? No. I would certainly like an opportunity, you know, tonight, obviously, because we're limited in time, would definitely like to have a conversation with you, because I served on the county board of health for three years.
Okay.
And that was at a time in that our neighboring communities refused to take any of those that, that were resettling. And so it was us and Milwaukee.
Okay.
And so I was a part, part of that history, and at that time, you know, the money from the federal government, there was an assumption, I think, at a, at a point in time where people thought, when they were resettled here, that they came with a federal check. But that certainly wasn't the case. It went from federal to state and then to the county. And it wasn't immediate. At that time, there were times that it was taking roughly 12 to 18 to 20 months. So, you know, there, there is something in which, you know, those counties
Sure.
do have to front services, and that could be anywhere from, depending on if it's a family or individuals. It could be flu shots, it could be car seats, you know, vaccinations, things like that, which, you know, apparently, that's part of the program, but, you know, not, not, it didn't happen all of the time. So I'd certainly like to have that discussion, because it's my understanding right now, and I can't even imagine the challenge you must be having when we still have communities that refuse to accept refugees in the Fox Valley.
We haven't, though. I guess that's, yeah.
So is Nina?
Mm-hmm.
Is Nina now accepting?
We have two families living in Nina, and Manasha has quite a large population, Manasha and Appleton, yeah. And they do get funding from our state. In fact, the Appleton and the Manasha School District share a refugee liaison, who's a refugee that we resettled, and he works between the two school districts. So definitely, by far, Appleton and Manasha are higher than Nina. Part of the challenge with Nina, it's not that they haven't refused, it's housing is more of a challenge. We have to find housing before refugees arrive that we know that they can afford, and so that's always a challenge. So a lot of times, that knocks Nina out before anything else, but, but yeah, they haven't refused.
Well, that sounds like it's positive and going in a different direction than prior.
Yeah, we, yeah, we haven't done that, but I've only been here for four years, so I don't know if that was previous, excuse me, previous, okay, okay. So it's all my doing? No, it's not. No, no. Thank you for all you do. That was probably inappropriate.
One moment. Deputy Mayor Herman?
I guess this isn't really a question. I guess it was part of what Mr. O'off was asking for requests. Oshkosh has always had a strong history of supporting refugees. When I was with the sheriff's office, Suppanic volunteered me to be on a couple of those refugee settlement committees through the United Way. So, you know, there's several churches in Oshkosh that have ministers now that are refugees and that, and so I think we need to stay strong to that. As she said, they're, they're very well-vetted. They come with, a lot of them come with a very good educational background. It's different than what we're seeing down at the borders and some of that other stuff when the refugees that do come here. There are some that have issues. That's why some of the boards that I've sat on that, you know, we've approved English as secondary language, or we've given, as you mentioned, the English classes and things that are out there and that. And the churches strongly support the refugees, too. So I think as a, as an opening city and a welcoming city, we should continue what we've been doing for years. It's just now it's being asked by the government versus we've just done it over the years. Part of it is, we have a great human services program and great services here in Oshkosh, and sometimes to a fault because of that, because we have such good track records and good placement records and things like that. So I think we should continue to support World Relief and what they're doing in the Fox River Valley. Thank you.
So it looks like, City Manager, you would like us to give you direction?
Madam Mayor, we have an individual that would like to speak.
Okay.
Yes, and do you have their name?
Yes.
Okay.
Kathy Prop, 1936 Hazel Street.
I can leave. I came for another reason, but I wanted to speak on this. And thank you for the positive comments that some of you have made about the refugee program. And I say absolutely yes, Oshkosh should continue to welcome refugees. The fact that our country is slashing the refugee flow is poor policy, mean-spirited, and counterproductive, in my opinion. It embarrasses and saddens me that Tammy told us the U.S. admitted about 95,000 refugees a few years ago, and now perhaps only 18,000. We are the richest country and one of the largest in the world. We can share our resources with refugees, immigrants, and migrants. In fact, these people, as Tammy pointed out, are vital to our workforce and to our economy. They enrich our culture and our lives. Oshkosh has a warm heart and compassion for those fleeing danger and seeking a better life. There's always room for one more at the table. So let's continue to support the refugee program and do what you have to do for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak on this?
No, I do not.
So Madam Mayor, when, when Tammy first approached me about this new executive order, it looked as though I would have had the authority, based on the description that the feds provided, to do this unilaterally, and I did not think that was appropriate at all. I think, number one, it was an opportunity for Tammy to tell the story about, you know, how we've assimilated refugees into our community, but also to get feedback, because this isn't something I think I, I should just act on by myself. So that's why I wanted to put on the agenda and get your feedback. It just, it's not a, it's kind of vague how the feds have defined it, but certainly...
Go figure.
Yeah, go figure. So here I am, asking you to figure out what the feds figure. No, I'm not asking you that, but certainly want to get some feedback from you that, if I were to write a letter, and Tammy and I have actually talked about asking communities up and down the valley, not just the ones that have been receiving refugees, but other communities, to say, look, this is important, and perhaps even get them into, helping accept them into their communities as well. So that's kind of why it's here.
Sounds like we're mostly supportive here. Councilmember Allison Osby?
Thank you. So is, is part of that also to consult with, say, like, the school district? Because obviously, I know that the school district does have a responsibility, I believe state law, that requires that, you know, if, if they, if they are not currently, you know, speaking English, that there has to be an interpreter for education. So, you know, is the school district required to weigh in on this and how it impacts them in their budget?
I'm not aware that the school districts are being asked to by the executive order.
Oh, okay.
But does it make sense? I guess I'd ask Tammy about her experiences with talking to the school district, because that's really more your world than it is mine.
Yeah, and again, we talk about this at our community meetings and get approval for the numbers that we're going to propose, and they're there. And there's normally two representatives from the Oshkosh School District there in attendance, and they lead our monthly meetings.
Oh, okay.
World Relief convenes a quarterly meeting that we bring both our, all of our communities together who are resettling, and then, as I mentioned, each community has their own, and the Oshkosh Area School District leads the monthly refugee resettlement meeting here in Oshkosh.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Paschal?
Sure. Just to respond to Councilmember Allison Osby's question. If a family or child enrolls in a school, that's usually what initiates what level of supports that they're provided in those schools. So it's kind of an absolute based on, I would loosely say how the federal requirements are written as to how the district responds to those students, which I would agree with your, they're very responsive in regards to providing that support. Thank you.
Appreciate, appreciate the feedback. Sorry.
I had one more. First, I, you don't need, you don't need to comment. I want to thank your organization for the wonderful work that you've been doing since the early part, early part of 2011. I had the opportunity to, to help the initial executive director help set up the office where, where it was initially, and, and then work with them day in and day out, sharing a space, meeting those refugee families that were coming into our community, so. And then, in my current capacity as a, as a property manager for the Oshkosh Housing Authority, I've, I've housed many, many of your, many of your, your, your new community members to Oshkosh, and so I've had to work with them through those transitions of learning to live in, in, in our community and, and everything, and it's, it's been very, very great. The refugee community has brought a great, a wonderful group of people to the Oshkosh community. I've had the pleasure of working with them hand in hand. So I'm completely in support of, of our, of our community continuing to move forward to, to welcoming people into our community.
Councilmember Crowsey?
I also support the cause. I mean, as a country of wealth compared to the rest of the disparity of the world, I mean, the best and biggest gift we can give to these people is compassion. And I work with a couple people that came from Sudan, and the guy is grateful to have bring his family here. And a lot of times, we, as people of the United States, we lose that gratefulness of what we have here as a treasure to call home. And the more people we can bring in that are assets to the community, I look at it, it's a betterment to our city, and I feel blessed that we take more in than other cities. Thank you.
I also want to thank you for working with the partnership with the police department on the bike program. I had an opportunity to attend and be part of that process, and they were so excited to get bicycles and helmets, and so thanks for coordinating those extra things, too. Transportation is so critical. You might come here, and you might find housing, but then you have to get somewhere. And they were just, I've seen a few of them on those bikes, and they're just so proud. So, thank you. All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Okay. So next, we have citizen statements, the first opportunity for citizen statements to counsel. Clerk, do we have anyone registered?
Yes, we do. Deb Martin, 164 Wildwood Drive.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about transportation. That was a great segue. I'm one of the volunteer drivers for the refugee families when they first come, and transportation is a challenge for them, as it is for many. And of course, I'm here, I know that later in the agenda, you are going to be talking about busing with our schoolchildren, and when you're doing that, please think about the temperature as it is this week in Oshkosh, and think, would you walk for 30 minutes or 45 minutes somewhere and then have to do that again later in the day? I know I wouldn't. I wouldn't want my children to have to do that, but there are kids here that are expected, expected to do that. As been mentioned in the past, we know that 41% of the school district children are eligible for free or reduced lunch, which is about $2.50 a day, and yet we expect them to find funds for $3 a day to ride the city bus. So it seems like an extra burden for them. Also, we know truancy is low in Oshkosh, but one of the key factors of truancy is how they get to school. And during the cold weather, I don't know, I think I might choose to stay home, too. So hopefully, you'll think about that. And I know the citizens, we're going to be asking citizens to chip in some money for, for a program, which, which I totally support. I'm so glad that you guys are having this discussion. But I hope you'll also think how much you, as a citizen, might be willing to support that project, this project as well. And when you're making your decisions, just, there's, there's a term I heard that it's, it comes from in Africa, but I heard it when I was in Appleton at an event a while ago, and it said, "How are the children doing?" So when you're making decisions, any decisions, and you make a lot here, I know, how, how does this affect the Oshkosh children, all of them, when you're deciding on any kind of funding, but especially to get our kids to school? Thank you so much.
Do we have anyone else registered? Pam?
No, we do not.
Next, we have a public hearing, Resolution 19616, approve issuance by the Public Finance Authority of Revenue Bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $4,200,000 to finance improvements to Grace Lutheran School. Do we have anyone registered for this?
No one is registered.
All right. Second reading, approve issuance by the Public Finance Authority of Revenue Bonds in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $4,000, $4,200,000 to finance improvements to Grace Lutheran School. And final reading, approve issuance by the Public Finance Authority of Revenue Bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $4,200,000 to finance improvements to Grace Lutheran School. Bring it to council for motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Sign down. Can we please call the roll?
Crowsey?
Aye.
Paschal?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Muggerower?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we have consent agenda. Do we have anyone registered?
Yes. For Resolution 19624, we have Kathy Prop, 1936 Hazel Street. 642? Oh, I'm sorry. 642.
640.
Lake Shore, correct?
Later, later. I apologize.
It seems early in the meeting.
Kathy, if you just want to have a seat, I apologize. I called you up early. Thank you.
Unless you want to talk about the pure fire apparatus?
No.
Okay. All right. So back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Can we please call the roll?
Crowsey?
Aye.
Paschal?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Muggerower?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
No items were removed, so we'll move on to pending ordinances. Ordinance 19-636, update parking regulations on Eagle Street and Marion Road Traffic and Parking Advisory Board recommends approval. Do we have anyone registered for 19636?
No one is registered.
All right. Back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. And moving on to ordinance, please take the roll.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Paschal?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Muggerower?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
19637, designate the intersection of West 10th Avenue and Minnesota Street as a two-way stop. Minnesota stops for West 10th Avenue. Currently a yield. Traffic and Parking Advisory Board recommends approval. Is there anyone here registered to speak on this item?
No one is registered.
Back to council for motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
And please call the roll. Discussion. Now call the roll.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Paschal?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Muggerower?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
And the last pending ordinance is 19638, repeal and replacement of Chapter 13 Fire Prevention. Do we have anyone registered for this item?
No one is registered.
All right. Back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Discussion. And please call the roll.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Paschal?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Muggerower?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
And then we have one new ordinance. There will be no formal action on this item, and that's 19639, approve zone change from Central Mixed Use District, CMU, to Central Mixed Use District with a planned development, CMUPD, at 717 Oregon Street. Plan Commission has approved and recommends approval. Is there anyone registered to speak on this item?
No one is registered.
Okay. No action on that. We'll move on to new.
Madam Mayor, if I can just point out, I know the applicant is here. If any council does have any questions, while I know there's no action tonight, if anyone has any questions, the applicant is here to potentially answer them if you have any. Just wanted to make sure you know.
Would you like to come forward and give a quick update, or?
That's okay.
Certainly, please. And your name and address, please.
Sure. Daniel Frank, 1111 Washington Avenue, and I own M Toxins Venom Lab, and we've purchased 717 Oregon Street and begun renovations on moving to open up our facility for educational use. We've partnered, I know a lot of this is already in your information, but we've partnered with Oshkosh Area School District, heads of all the science departments. They want to integrate us into their core curriculum for bio and chem, as well as, we're working very closely with Chancellor Andrew Levitt, and we are offering internship positions for the chemistry and biology departments for UWO as well. Our business since 2011 per annum saves over 20,000 lives in Africa alone with the product that we produce. So, we currently produce just outside of Winnebago County, but we're very excited at the potential to be able to bring this into the downtown and enrich the community.
What is it that you produce?
Excuse me. Animal toxins. So, we produce snake venom and scorpion and spider venoms.
Well, there we go.
That usually raises a lot of questions.
Are you inviting the council to a rattlesnake roundup now?
No rattlesnake roundups, no.
Just wondering.
Yeah.
Councilmember Pascal.
Sure. Thank you. So, just tell us, why is this beneficial that you would work in this field?
Why is it beneficial?
You have a TV in front of you in the Oshkosh community. Why is it beneficial to do what you do?
So, aside from the life-saving work we do with the World Health Organization for antivenom, we also provide venoms for a number of different medical research projects with various institutions throughout the United States and overseas. So, we're currently working in FDA clinical trials on cancer research, non-addictive pain medication, et cetera. There's actually a replacement for opioids for pain relief that's being made from Black Mamba Venom in final FDA approval right now. One last thing I can quickly talk about, one of the venoms we provide was found to have a peptide that highlights cancer cells in a patient, so it's a new FDA testing early detection method. So, I guess that's why, to help with that, yeah.
Very interesting.
I think it's a great reuse of an old building in Oregon Street that was a long-time business, Costles.
I wouldn't have come up with it, so.
No, me either.
All right. Thank you so much.
So, thank you.
Awesome. Moving on to new resolutions. Resolution 19640, establish 2020 stormwater utility rate to 19692 per ERU. Do we have anyone registered on that item?
No one is registered.
Back to council for motion and a second.
So moved.
Discussion. Mr. Rabi, would you like to just give a brief summary of what this increase?
This is establishing the rate that is built upon the analysis that Ellers presented to the common council at Budget Workshop Number Three. That analysis did recommend a 7 percent increase in our rates in order to fund our capital and operating, and so this is, just getting that rate established, it would become effective April 1st.
And what does that come out to about per month, again?
I think it was 1634, if I remember correctly. 1641, my apologies.
So, increases to 1641, it's not a $16.41 increase?
No, goes from, I believe it was 15, yeah, it was about 1534 going to about 1641, so about a dollar a month.
Okay. All right. So, do we have any discussion? Back to roll call.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pascal.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we have Resolution 19641, approve 2020 pilot housing stock improvement programs, new construction, code compliance, and historic preservation. Is there anyone registered to speak?
No one is registered.
All right. Back to council for motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Davis, you want to just give us a brief what this program's all about and what we're going to be doing with it? There's been some social media discussions that we lack, a lot of initiative in this area, and so could you just briefly tell us where we're headed with this program?
Yes, we're coming up with three new initiatives regarding our housing stock. Number one would be new construction. We're looking at giving contractors or developers an incentive to build new houses on existing lots in the city of Oshkosh. Those would typically be the sites that we've acquired and demolished, oblided property, so that's where that's going to be targeted. Our code compliance is a new program. That is identifying the properties where the owner has code violations that have been identified by the inspectors. Oftentimes, we've gone to court, and the court has ordered these people to make these improvements, but they lack the funding to do so. So, this will provide them with a 0 percent interest deferred loan to make these code corrections. And then, lastly, we have a number of historic districts with hundreds of properties within them. This would help fund, again with the 0 percent interest deferred loan, for these historic rehabilitations and renovations in the city.
And how would citizens go about applying for these types of programs?
As of January 1, we'll have applications available and brochures. We're putting the finishing touches on those. We'll be providing that information to the news media, our website, Oshkosh Media Services, as well as reaching out to contractors and the neighborhood associations for these types of programs.
Okay. Thank you very much. Sounds exciting.
I believe we saw a preview in the Oshkosh Herald last issue on some of these items.
Yes. Talked, the RDA is involved, and we talked a little bit about that at the RDA meeting, saying this was still pending council action, but gave the heads up to RDA because they're very interested in seeing the redevelopment of properties within the city of Oshkosh. And typically, the acquisition demolitions go through the RDA because they're the only bodies that can go through a blighting process, so the RDA is involved with a lot of these projects.
Appreciate all the work that has gone into this. Over the last year, we've had numerous discussions about ways to improve our housing stock, increase affordable housing, and so this is a great start for the new year towards that end. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Please call the roll.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pascal.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next is Resolution 19642, approve Lake Shore Park Master Plan. Advisory Park Board and Plan Commission recommend approval. Is there anyone registered on this?
Yes, we have Kathy Prop, 1936 Hazel Street. Thank you for your patience, Kathy.
No, it's my turn. Kathy Prop, 1936 Hazel Street. In general, I do support the Lake Shore Park Master Plan. It's visionary and it's exciting. However, obviously, the $10 million potential cost is huge. But I am here tonight to urge the City Council, Oshkosh Foundation, Oshkosh Corporation, and any and all major donors to step up our game, make Lake Shore Community Park a significant community focus. I challenge Oshkosh to develop a financing plan for park completion over three years, five at most. And I know normally speaking, our capital appropriations program crawls along, and we have a ceiling. I know that. This park should be the focus of the next major Oshkosh Foundation community fundraising plan, supplemented by grants, of course. Kids and every resident who uses the park system can participate in helping fundraise. My concern is that with a five-phased approach, and you'll hear about that in a minute, how can we ensure that the plan for this significant Lake Shore Community Park will be completed? If we fail to develop a significant financing plan, what will the unfinished sections of the park look like until their turn comes? Please make a Lake Shore Park financing plan a top priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else registered?
No one else is registered.
On this item? Okay. Council discussion?
We didn't.
We need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
End discussion. Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things before I ask Mr. Mallard and them to talk about it. I agree with Ms. Prop, this has to be a priority. We took a golf course away from our citizens, and now we're going to put a park out there and take five to six to seven years to develop, and it really doesn't even bring the youth to the program. That's a disappointment. We didn't look at the CBB study, take that lack of athletic facilities into play. So, let's get the bicycle paths going, let's get the walking paths going, let's get the green space going, the outdoor shelters, let's get the skating rink, I think there's a skating rink connected to this. Let's get it going, because we took it away from the youth of our kids for youth golf and things like that, so we need to focus and make this a priority. I know we have the master plan for Rainbow and the reconstruction of Oshkosh Avenue, which is dead in the water right now, nothing going on. So, we've taken a lot away, and we haven't put a lot back. So, I hope that when this plan gets going, the community will step up and help make it happen. So, Mr. Mallard, you want to go over the highlights of this humongous plan?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're, both Nathan and I are excited to be here tonight because of a process that really started back in March when Smith Group attended the State of the City, right shortly after signing an agreement with the city. So, there's been extensive public input, number of boards and committees meeting jointly along with the Advisory Parks Board, a variety of ways for the citizens to give us input. And I think Smith Group did a great job pulling that information together. I'd like to have Nathan Hilmer with Smith Group, who's really been the project lead along with us, to give a brief presentation, maybe about the process as well as what's included in the plan.
Sure. Thanks, Ray. So, for those of you I haven't met, my name's Nathan Hilmer. I'm with Smith Group. We're a multidisciplinary firm, spread all over the country. I'm representing a project team that was based in Madison, but also had team members from our Ann Arbor office, one of whom is an Oshkosh native. And I'd like to try and distill for you a nine-month process down into five minutes, so I'll go through this quickly, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. So, this is kind of the rough timeline for the overall project. We started in May officially. I think we were here for the State of the City address, which I believe was in April. So, we actually kind of got a head start. We worked through an analysis and visioning phase, which is basically data gathering and processing that data, a conceptual design phase where we explored multiple preliminary options, and then, based on feedback from our public engagement process, based on feedback from the Advisory Park Board, Ped Bike Group, Sustainability Group, and the Plan Commission, and just kind of overall feedback throughout from Ray and his entire staff, we arrived at a preferred concept plan, which is the plan you'll see today. So, really, the first step in the overall project was this public input component, which was twofold. We had a public visioning meeting, which was at the Convention Center, where we gave a brief presentation, and then we had boards stationed throughout the ballroom to try and solicit information on some of those things that are a little bit intangible sometimes, so not, you know, I want, you know, X, Y, or Z, but trying to get at what's the community's vision, what are the goals for this project. The complement to that process was a Polco survey, which was an online survey. It was open, I believe, for two and a half weeks. We had 429 respondents, and this is just a couple of examples of how we sort of processed and represented that data. But the overall conclusion from the public visioning meeting, from the Polco data, from the comment cards we received, from emails that came in to Ray and were forwarded on to us, is that the community really was focused on a park that's about passive recreation, that is engaged with the restoration of native habitats and native ecosystems, that promotes art and community, and a park that somehow respects and represents and kind of, you know, offers up the history of the place. And so, there's this kind of overlay of the site's cultural history that was very important to people. So, after that initial kind of outreach effort, there was the ongoing kind of data gathering and processing. This is just a snapshot of some of the lenses that we used to kind of examine the site. Clearly, both as a piece of land that was kind of part of the river historically, this site is very much engaged with water. The remnant golf course, or the ponds that were part of the golf course are really remnants of a slough or a meander from that old, the old river course. You know, we looked at kind of the physical characteristics of the site, be it topography, the way the golf holes kind of align in parallel with the water rather than connecting to it. And then also, you know, I mentioned the rich cultural history of the site and the lakes and the river system in general. This was a significant area for native peoples in the pre-settlement era. And in addition to kind of all those lenses, processing data, you know, for a plan like this that's kind of conceptual, we also look for comparable project types and touchstones to help inform, you know, what this plan is going to be. And we came up with this way to think about those things in terms of threads, places, and moments, which are really, you know, threads you can think about as kind of the organizing pieces of the plan and the connecting pieces of the plan. And then the places and the moments are, you know, the areas within the park that you spend time. So, it's everything from a building to a bench, right? And there's this overall hierarchy. And when we looked kind of specifically at these overlays or these precedents, you know, water has been a huge thing. We've been engaged with engineering and James throughout the process to kind of understand the work that's been done to date with the ponds, how the ponds work, how they manage stormwater for not only the site, but the adjacent neighborhood. So, there's this whole overlay of drivers related to the water system that became very important for the park, both in terms of making sure it remains kind of functional from an infrastructure standpoint, but also, you know, how can we bring back wildlife? How can we, you know, take the next step to make this thing even more functional for more processes, more systems, more species? Some of those other layers that we looked at, clearly, things like pathways, boardwalks, overlooks that engage the ponds, that engage the waterfront, open buildings, so that's things like picnic shelters and just, you know, shelters on the water, the idea of earthworks that really grew out of onsite experience. You know, the west half of the park is very noisy because of the freeway, so the idea of using earthworks to kind of create space and mitigate the noise from the road, and then thinking about things like public art and community identity. And so, we originally explored these three options that you see on the screen. You know, they're all very different. They all explored things like the water system, the pathway system, the lakefront in different ways. They kind of had, they all kind of went into different depths in terms of level of investment. And we cycled through rounds of review with parks, with engineering, with the Advisory Park Board, and basically arrived at this amalgam of these three plans, which maintains the bones of the existing water system, but kind of uses landform and uses that idea of the community identifier piece at the west part, with more of a, kind of a program-intensive focus area at the east part. So, this is the existing site, the Oshkosh Court property, which I think is pretty much complete by this point, is that chunk in the middle that's kind of grade back. This is the overall master plan. The pond network, you know, we've been referring to it as being enhanced, so we're imagining that the way the ponds move water back and forth works the same, but those edges of the ponds, the margins, get reworked, they can get regraded, they may have additional capacity. But then, you know, importantly, there's kind of this green connector of restored habitat that connects all those things together. of restored habitat that connects all those things together, sort of becoming a, you know, a figurative and also kind of physical and literal link through the park. So really, an organizing backbone. And then we can kind of dive into the focus areas in a second. That master plan, the bones of it, I talked about being the ponds and kind of this green connector, but also the points of access and the way you move through the park are really critical. So here, parking areas are highlighted orange, and all of these green pathways that you see kind of sneaking through the site are creating loops that give you access to the River Walk, to the Regional Trail that goes over the bridge, and then also to Mary Jewell and Rainbow Park to the east. And here you see kind of that blue-green backbone that the spaces are hung off of and these kind of big, open, flexible lawn areas that are sort of like stepping stones of open space throughout the park. I'm just kind of zooming in a little bit more close. This is the west park. So here, this is really about, you know, restoring and enhancing that pond network, again, to kind of create the frame for that open space. Two very large lawn areas that are, you know, flexible, multipurpose. The central space is big enough for a professional-sized soccer field. So in terms of thinking about the ability to use these for, you know, sport is an overlay that inform the design. And then you can kind of see the berms, so this idea of the earthworks that help, again, to mitigate the freeway noise and focus space both towards the central lawn and then out towards the lake, and then framing that space with picnic shelters. There's this little knuckle at the east park, the south end of the east park, that's very much about engaging with Mary Jewell, leveraging the adjacent restrooms that are in the lift station building, locating a nature playground there, and some additional parking that serves both lakeshore and also helps with some of the load at Mary Jewell. And then the east park being kind of the, you know, the early-phase crux of getting people there, building momentum, kind of the catalyst piece of the project. And so that's where we're proposing this idea of a four-season building, which would have conditioned space that could be used for community events, could be rented for private events. That engages with the ponds, engages with the splash pad and plaza and these lawn spaces, and also kind of extensions of pathways to the water as bridges and walkways and things like that. Just a visual for what that four-season building might look like. These are two projects that, the one on the left is one we built in Oak Creek a few years ago. The one on the right is something we're working on in Toledo right now. And then this idea of how are we going to phase this and what are the targets for construction cost? This is kind of packed full of information, but the idea is, Phase One is that knuckle at the north end of Pinocqua that includes the four-season building, some lawn space, about 80 cars' worth of parking and drop-off and things like that that serve the building, serve a splash pad. Phase Two is about getting people to the west half of the park and establishing that lawn in the parking lot so that we can start to use the west half of the park, and we can also use the west half of the park as a way to connect to the regional trail. And then importantly, early in the process here, we recognized that cultural history recognition area in Phase Two, which is kind of the dark spot at the north end of the Phase Two window there. That's adjacent to that site that's been identified as the, you know, area of cultural significance, both on the park property and on the Oshkosh Court property. Phase Three is all about enhancing the pond network and improving the lakeshore edge. And then Phase Four builds out the rest of the west park. Phase Five builds out the rest of the east park, which is primarily at that point, you know, regrading, planting, restoration, and then establishing the lawn areas. So that's a little bit more than five minutes, and I apologize for that. So.
One minute. Mr. Mallor, could I just ask, so you mentioned Phase Two and accessing that western part, but citizens can currently use that space for like snowshoeing or cross-country skiing and that right now as it's undeveloped and opened as a park, correct?
We still haven't taken the signs down because of the River Walk construction that was going on. And I'd have to meet with Alan and his staff and find out exactly what's up there for safety precaution, make sure there's fence. But yes, I'm sure people are going out there currently and using it, and that would be our intent. Is if it's safe, knowing that the people can't get to that construction zone where the trail is taking place yet, that we could probably open up that site.
For the season?
If everything is safe on the site, yes, once we take a look at that.
Okay, okay. Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you. Just a question on how you prioritize, you know, the five phases. Wouldn't you want to, with the expense of money that we put in and what Oshkosh Court put in for the River Walk, wouldn't we want to do that shoreline first so that that's completed and done? Not wait three years to improve the river raft and the look of the walk, everything along that River Walk?
Yeah, that's a very good question, because the bulk of the shoreline right now is just rubble, revetment.
Right.
So part of the reason we put that in Phase Three, and I should say that when we set these phasing and budget targets, these were meant to kind of group priorities. The way that the city chooses to implement this is really at the city's discretion. But it was really meant to set kind of chunks of priorities. So Phase One was really, how do we get people there? How do we get an active park? Phase Two is kind of the west park complement of that, right? You have a big chunk of space, and how do we activate it? And then, once we get people there, then that, we brought in Phase Three with the restoration.
All right.
So that was the.
So it's fluid but yet flexible?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other council members? Discussion? All right. Please call the roll.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Heschel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Ugrauer.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carrie Seven.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Next, we have council discussion in direction to city manager and future agenda items.
Oops. We have one other item, one other item that was added, Madam Mayor.
Oops, I have a old, my apologies. I have an outdated agenda. Still under new resolutions, 19644, approve amendments to development agreement with Merge LLC for redevelopment of Parcels H, I, and J within the Marion Road redevelopment area to extend closing to March 31st, 2020. Do we have anyone registered?
No, we do not.
All right, back to council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, what's the delay or what's the reason behind it?
It's a complicated project, so there's a series of things that we have to clear up through the title, and there's ongoing geotechnical and remediation issues that need to be worked out.
And you believe those will be worked out and there won't be concern that the project may not go forward?
It's more an issue that there's a lot of complicating factors with those. I have not heard anything from the developer that they don't want to go forward. They want to go forward. It's just that the titles are, need to be cleared up, and the final remediation plans need to be approved by DNR.
Okay, and we know there's a lot of contaminated soil in there. Do you anticipate that the city's going to have to pick up some of the costs of that remediation?
According to our development agreement, they're responsible for those costs, and that gets wrapped into the Pago payments that we would make to them in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. So Alan, just the usual fleas on the dog on this with everything?
I wouldn't say it's usual because it's an old industrial area and there's a little more than you would actually get on most properties.
Okay. So it's more on our end than on their end, probably?
It's more on the last 150 years of Oshkosh that are on those properties that are complicating it.
Thank you.
No further discussion? Please call the roll.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Heschel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Ugrauer.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carrie Seven.
All right, next we'll move on to council discussion in direction to city manager and future agenda items. Future workshop?
Mr. Davis, if you could just come up real quick. First, in terms of future workshops, the first one that we are requesting of council is one on TIF application presentations. The council has asked that we have these before they submit applications. And Mr. Hess with Invista Analytics is going to be there to make some presentations on a couple of properties that his group is looking at acquiring. Alan, if you could help me with those locations. That's why I'm putting you on the spot.
Smith School, the RDA property on South Main, and a couple of other projects on North Main Street. Final number and location to be determined by Mr. Hess and at the investment group.
We don't have applications yet. This is the precursor to receiving an application. I would imagine that shortly after the meeting on the 14th. But given our track record, happy to have Mr. Hess come, but we had presentations that were supposed to take 10 minutes, and they ended up taking a lot longer. So we thought we'd put this at 5:00 so that they would, it wouldn't interfere with the general council meeting. So if the council's okay with that, that's what we'll.
So would this be for 45 minutes, then?
Yes.
Well, because we have a council meeting at 6:00, we have a hard stop. Typically, it's 5:45 for one of our workshops.
All right. Okay. Mr. Hess, if you're listening, going to hold you to it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The second one, we've already discussed, previous meetings just have it there as a reminder. The joint workshop with the Council Plan Commission, RDA, and the Rental Housing Board regarding the impediments to Fair Housing Plan and our five-year CDBG consolidated plan. That's January 28th at 5:00. That's before our council meeting. And then, just a friendly reminder, the day after, you'll be spending a lot of time with us, is our all-day council retreat on strategic planning. We are still working on a location. We've got a live one, so we'll be happy to report that later on, but we're just not ready there. But we'll have a location, and it'll start at 8:00. And we'll give you more details as we get closer to that date. And that's all I have on those future workshops, Madam Mayor.
Could we also get the, just the kind of flow agenda for that, maybe a week ahead of time, for that strategic planning session?
Sure. Just as a reminder, you should be getting a survey from Ms. Jenks, probably by the end of the week, to get you going on that for your pre-Christmas assignment for you. But we'll get it to you. The idea is try to get it done before Christmas.
So in other words, if all of us get those in time, we can get this back sooner.
Diane will be back bugging you if you don't turn it in. So but we'll gently nudge you. Thank you.
Okay, so next item is the, bringing back the discussion on the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. And city manager and I were able to meet with our HR, Michelle Banky, I'm sorry, director last week to try to preliminarily finalize, I know that's a contradiction in terms, coming forward to council to give direction on this. And we categorized it into internal and external expectations. So if Michelle would like to come forward and talk about the internal piece of that, share those details, then city manager and I can bounce over to the external.
In order to help give council focus, what we felt was appropriate are things that we're actively working on internally regarding training. We had an HR generalist added to the budget, and part of it was to work on recruitment with an eye on diversity and inclusion. So Ms. Banky spent a great deal of time with Ms. Jenks, Ms. Hopper, our HR generalists, and Michelle has a little update for council on that. And I thought it'd be appropriate this time to just give you a little briefing on that.
Right, thank you very much. As I have had the opportunity to talk to the mayor and city manager Roloff about, we spend resources within the HR on diversity and inclusion as part of our initiatives. So as he mentioned, I have two HR generalists, and both HR generalists and myself consider the diversity and inclusion initiatives key parts of our positions. So on the recruiting side, Ms. Hopper has a lot of recruitment-related outreach that she does within the community. She attends a lot of school functions and such to get students involved in knowing about the city, does things with the universities. We're working on some joint initiatives with the fire department and Big Brothers, Big Sisters to get young women interested in the firefighting arena, things like that. So that, those are some of the things that we do on the front end of recruitment. We also do check-ins with new hires. We want to make sure that when they come to the city, they're feeling included, they're feeling as though this was a good move for them. So again, that position spends a lot of time working with the community, improving those relationships with schools, groups, et cetera, so that we can really showcase ourselves and what we do for members of our community. On the more internal side, we also have Ms. Jenks, who works, of course, with you on the strategic planning and also on organizational development, diversity and inclusion and all of those. So we all, you know, we've been working on our key metrics, including our demographics of our organization, the city of Oshkosh as an employer, and of course, the city of Oshkosh as a community, so that we can make our city employment mix look very much like the city does. That's our goal. So we're, as you know, I came to the council at budget time to invest in training our employees so that we can offer citywide training to the organization on diversity and inclusion to, I guess, further make our employees understand why diversity and inclusion is so important to us as an organization and to the city of Oshkosh. So we are, of course, working on what that will look like. We appreciate the resources that we're going to be given to continue that training and development internally. I'm just trying to think of some of the things, obviously, we want to do. Use that budget to train the trainer so that we can get with all of our employees and get education out to them as they, of course, interact in the community. Trying to think if there's any other main things that I wanted to cover regarding what we are currently doing. But those are some of our initiatives.
So that was more from the internal perspective. And then the follow-up piece to that is the discussion about, you know, our follow-up to the diversity coordinator position that was discussed several years ago. And out of that study came a recommendation for creation of a diversity committee. And so it was thought that that committee, this Diversity and Inclusion Committee, would be focusing a little bit more on the external pieces. And more specifically, having met with a number of the champions in the community who were interested in this and coming up with some thoughts on researching what those... So this committee would be charged with researching those needs and priorities, which some of them have been identified but could be updated. The first-year goals, making recommendations to council for their prior, or that committee's priorities, goals, and objectives, and then identifying resources as necessary, perhaps identifying some of the low-hanging fruit to address initially, and identifying information to share with the general public and underserved communities. And then finally, identifying some best practices for diversity and inclusion. As we know, that study was done several years ago, and we've learned since then, and we've done some things since then. So bringing this back to council for, you know, discussion. Councilmember Crowsey.
I've talked to different community members that have seen this on the agenda, and they're willing to step up and put their skin in the game too and make Oshkosh a better community for everybody of all different walks of life and wherever they came from to feel like this is their home too. So sooner we get a committee going, I think we're going to get a lot of volunteers and a lot of people interested.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. Accruing Mr. Crowsey's comments, I agree. I guess the one question I have would be, are we looking at making like a board or commission, and do we have like a brief definition of what that committee's tasked with for this, you know, as far as, you know, like all our boards and commissions have kind of a paragraph of what we're asking them to do, and right now, we don't have that. So is staff or is the mayor looking at putting together what the purpose of that committee would be? I think there's importance for it. I just wanted to make sure we don't bring six, eight people together and we don't have anything for them to really do but talk about diversity and inclusion. I think we really would want to have almost a sense of what that group is tasked with.
Right. And so one of our next steps for follow-up was going to be after this discussion, also looking at, we were looking at, Wawa Tosa has a format or a structure that has some elements to it, but as I read off, these were some of the initial thoughts that would be part of that mission and scope. Those items that I just read off, but certainly welcome any further input in that and revision.
One of the things that the mayor and Ms. Banky and I discussed was, the first year's always the toughest, and if you don't give them some general direction, they're spinning their wheels. And that's true with basically any committee that you set out to do. The idea would be to do those priorities. What are the low-hanging fruit type of things? What can we go after based on where the committee would be their priorities are? Give them that first year to basically come back and say, these are the things we really want to sink our teeth into. And then council can say, you're on track with where we want to go. We'll have another year worth of input from the public on it. And then what best practices do we want to start implementing? I'm very happy with what Ms. Banky and her staff have done in terms of working on the internal stuff, and I think you're going to see things coming forward as we move on. This will give the opportunity for the community to say, what do we want the community to work on? This helps prioritize that because a lot of the committees that go on in other communities, they're doing both, and to get your arms around both internal and external issues is kind of tough. I believe staff can cover very well the internal items and then give the committee a little more focus rather than trying to go, one meeting they do internal, then they do external, and then you're starting to spin your wheels.
And I think I should clarify too that while that may be an initial like formation for the committee with staff kind of giving some coaching, the ultimate end goal is that that committee would be an advisory committee for council, and, you know, staff would be perhaps not as involved later on after that formation and sharing information, but still present and participating.
Thank you, Mayor. Fitz, this might be a question for you, or Mark, or anybody, what does our city look like today? What does our city employees look like? Are the statistics similar to our community for employees as far as minorities and things like that?
I'd say we're a lot closer to the demographic of our community than we ever have been, but we have a little ways to go. I think we've made some strides based on the initiatives that Michelle and her folks are working on in regard to having, just from a gender perspective, you know, having females and traditionally staffed male occupations. Police is one place that comes to mind when I think about those sorts of changes that have taken place over time. I guess I have the benefit because I'm becoming more of an old-timer to see some of the changes.
Very old-timer, Fitz, very old-timer.
Right. But I think we're making some progress, but we still, in all fairness, we have a ways to go, and I think Michelle outlined it properly. I think, you know, our focus initially, we want to be successful for the long term, and we know that everybody is at a different point in the spectrum of their understanding of the importance of diversity. And we want to provide, you know, equal opportunity for education in regard to everyone that we have so we can all move forward as a team and understand how important this really is. So that's our initial focus, but I think we still have some work to do.
Great. Thank you very much.
Sure.
So then, I'm assuming then, Mr. Roloff, you would like to hear from us about creation of a citizen committee ordinance?
Yeah, I guess what I would propose to do is prepare a draft for circulation amongst council, because having an ordinance in front of you and saying, kind of take it or leave it, I think you're wanting some give and take. So what I would like to do is, you know, after the first of the year, start circulating some general ideas before the city attorney starts putting the meat and the muscle onto the ordinance itself, because there's a lot of work that goes into those ordinances, and the city attorney is pretty persnickety when it comes to making these ordinances. So the idea would be to give you a draft of what the, what the draft purpose of the committee would be and duties and responsibilities, keeping it a little general for the first year, but then we'd probably revisit it after a year to say, what more do we want to put on this committee or focus, depending on which way.
And I think charging the committee with, you know, coming up with a kind of an action plan by the end of that year makes a lot of sense.
Action plan, strategic plan, yeah, there, something like that. That's some good focus that we can give them.
And I just want to thank Michelle for all the work that she did when we got together. She was so prepared, and we have made some strides in the last couple of years. I don't even think a few years ago, we were even measuring where we were. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And then Councilmember Mookrour is going to give us an update on the ad hoc committee for Alternatives to Special Assessments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, looking at the name of that committee, we couldn't have made it any longer, by the way.
Can we just call it HAM?
But no, I appreciate the chance to update council on the work we've been undertaking. So roughly about 90 days ago, maybe about 100-ish, council gave direction to set up an ad hoc committee, and I was one of those proponents of giving a deadline of, you know, end of year. Basically, this meeting was our hope to potentially come back to council with something, because my thoughts always are deadlines do spur action. The committee has been working tirelessly. They have been committed to the task. I've been very thankful for their efforts. We've been meeting basically every three weeks since the inception back in September, and attendance is high, and the discussions are very positive and very fruitful. We've been discussing many options, many different alternatives. The option that came before council and subsequently did not pass is definitely one of those options, variants of that, as well as continuing the discussion in terms of wheel tax, looking at other, you know, sales tax options and just those discussions. So the discussion itself has been wide. It's been, and I've appreciated all the input and the, just the effort that that entire committee has brought in. It's a wide range of views and opinions and demographics and backgrounds, and they're all needed at the table, and they're all participating very, very well. We are going to be meeting again in January, so that leads me to tell you that we do not have something to bring to you yet. It is my hope that we will bring something to you shortly, but I will not predetermine and nor do I predict what that may be or when it will be. But we are going to meet, we have a date scheduled in January. That may be the last meeting. There may be one, potentially maybe two after that. I can't say that as of yet.
But will we have that by the end of January, you think?
I can't, I will, we're meeting early January, but I won't, I'm not putting a timeline on them. They're working very well, and that'd be too presumptuous just to say that I will have something to you by that.
Can I save you, Matt? It is an incredibly complicated process. There are so many options, so many legal questions, legal answers, and we're tweaking a couple of different plans, and it's a little more, a little more in-depth than what we had initially hoped it would be, so.
Which is a good thing. And thankful to city staff for being attentive to our requests and the information flow. That's very appreciative, but I'm hopeful that sometime in the very early part of January, February, that I can come to council with something in terms of what they think we should use and potentially go forward with.
And so are there minutes available for citizens to kind of catch up to speed on, or do we have any?
We didn't do formal minutes, but we do have notes from all of our meetings to give you a flavor of where we're going. And the other item that I was going to mention was that at the last meeting, we had a presentation. One of the options that Mr. Robbie and I had kind of pushed aside was a transportation fee that was based on traffic, but we had a gentleman who James and I have known for a number of years, who actually did work on one for the Village of North Fondleac. They ultimately did not approve it, but it really did pass a lot of tests of muster, and it's based on traffic generation, which was one of the things that I think we were saying, that's a lot of work, probably more than you want to do. And I think Mr. Mazanik was trying to maybe demystify it. It's still complicated, but he was trying to demystify it. We have Mr. Mazanik's PowerPoint along with the minutes or the notes from the meeting. I'll forward the PowerPoint to you just to give you a little flavor for how that differs from the transportation fee that the council had rejected back in July.
Could those be posted to our Boards and Commissions page too, to the ad hoc committee so that the public has access?
Sure.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
I thought that was one of the reasons why we did an ad hoc committee, so that we did not have to notice the meetings and all that information.
We noticed every single meeting, but we, so we have all the, we have notes, and we did that to kind of document our progress.
Yeah, I believe that, but I thought the reason for the ad hoc though was to, so that we could just move it along without, you know.
We still have the open meetings law. Once council formally creates any committee, that's a formal body that we have to respect. But we didn't do formal minutes, but the, beginning of every meeting, Mr. Mookrour is the chair of the committee, and he just says, any comments or questions about the last meeting minutes? It's not a formal motion, but they are, they're certainly reflective of what happened at the meeting.
Yeah, no, his sentiment is true. Yeah, no, every meeting is being run generally in line with any other board and commission we have in terms of, you know, quorum and attendance. Notes are being taken actually by City Manager Roloff's Assistant Diane, and yeah, they're being approved and reviewed the next meeting, and they're absolutely available. I forgot what else I was going to say, so I'll turn it back over to you.
Yeah, I was just asking if we could post that to the.
Thank you for pointing it out.
Oh, darn it. No, go ahead.
Well, thank you to everybody who's working on that. I think that, you know, we kind of had an ambitious timeframe that we were initially looking at, and certainly better to do it right than quickly. All right, next is a second opportunity for citizens' statements to council. Do we have anyone registered, Pam?
No, we do not.
All right. Do we have any council member announcements or statements? No. City Manager, it's all your.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The update of outstanding issues are in your packet. Certainly happy to answer any questions you might have. Covered a couple of them this evening, the housing stock inventory approved by council. The strategic planning is scheduled. The mayor had asked me the other day what's going on with the lifeline rates. That's part of our rate application. We'll be reporting back to the council once we go through that process, but I anticipate that mid-year because that normally takes a six-to-nine month process to do the fee review. So those are kind of the outstanding issues that we have out there. The next item I have is the Oshkosh Ave New Bridge closure. I'm going to have Mr. Robbie help me just a little bit. The DOT has identified the bidder. I don't know if they formally awarded the bid.
The contract has been awarded, but they have not established a schedule yet. I was notified late last week that once they do have a schedule identified, and they will be scheduling a pre-construction conference, and I will get notified of that as well. But they do not have a schedule established as of yet.
So it's not closing that first week of January?
Unknown at this point in time when they're planning it.
That would be the absolute earliest, but don't bet on it. We'll probably be talking about it around the time of the next council meeting.
Councilmember Mookrour.
Actually, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I apologize. I'm going to ask to take one small step back. You were talking about in the status of outstanding issues, we moved fast.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I wasn't able to hit the button fast enough. It's a small button over here. I don't know. No, I have a question just on that, because in the current status, it says, staff is currently incorporating a lifeline rate into its rate application request. Last time we talked about this, we had asked for more information to be brought to us before that that application was submitted, so we had an opportunity to discuss that or advise on that. It wasn't the intent of this council to include that in the rate application.
We have not actually gotten started on the application yet, so we haven't really started pulling any information together as of yet.
Okay. Just by reading it, I take it that.
Normally, before we submit, I believe we give you an indication of what we're sending into the PSC. Thank you for clarifying that. I'll make note of that for future reference.
Thank you.
James, thank you, Mayor. James, so we don't know when the Oshkosh Ave Bridge is going to close?
I do not have an exact date yet.
Yeah, okay. And I just want to personally thank you. I got a whole bunch of emails and phone calls from people that said you were great to work with on the signage and everything, so I want to thank you and your department for working with the university and all the business people around there, so greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions about those other two items, the next one is our public input meeting, which will actually be tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM at Oaklawn Cemetery for the Jackson Street corridor city. At Oaklawn, did I?
You said Oaklawn Cemetery.
Oaklawn Cemetery. Bad idea, thank you.
It's not. It's very alive.
That cemetery is popping.
Oaklawn Elementary, thank you, Mr. Robbie. But it is tomorrow night, it is tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. So this is the first of a couple of public input meetings we'll be having to get input from. You remember, there's two really different areas with the Jackson Street Study, the parts, south of Murdoch, which is primarily residential, and north Murdoch, which is more commercial. And they both have different features and different needs, so getting input from all of the residents and businesses, and as long as they don't show up to the cemetery and they show up to Oaklawn Elementary, we'll have a successful meeting. Thank you. And then there are several notices of professional agreements, really just getting ready for our 2020 capital improvement program, our wetland determination and delineation services that go through over the course of the year. That's on an as-needed basis. The Knapp Street quarries and Timmerman landfill, that's the ongoing maintenance of our current landfills that have exhaust systems in place. Then our 2020 stormwater management assistance, AECOM, helps us on an as-needed basis again. And then the professional services agreement to get working on that museum foundation repair specifications and construction oversight, that's part of our 2020 capital improvement program. So those are what I have, and unless there's any questions, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
No, thank you. Deputy Mayor has a motion for us.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that following the adjournment of this meeting, the council may convene in the cause, start that over. I move that following the adjournment of this meeting, the council may convene in the cause, the council may convene to discuss pursuant to section 19.85, parent one, parent C of the Wisconsin State Statutes, discuss the performance evaluation and compensation regarding the city manager employee over which the common council's jurisdiction and exercises responsibility.
responsibility.
Second?
All in favor?
No.
Take the roll.
Crowsey?
Here.
Peschall?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
I meant to say aye.
It's okay.
Oh, Mary?
Aye.
Period seven.
All right. We're adjourned.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Second, yeah, go to the coes. Now you can hit it. It's in there, please.